Let's go through that one more time. Welcome, everybody, to the September 22, 2025 Regular City Council Meeting. And at this point, I'd like to ask our Ms. Hara to read the oral call, please.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Present.
Counselor Runyon.
Present.
Counselor Randall.
Present.
Counselor Richardson.
Present.
Counselor Ring.
Present.
President. Item three is the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd call on Counselor Tim McLaughlin to please lead us in the pledge.
Would you please stand, if you're able, and join with me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item four is approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I'd move to approve the agenda with one amendment, and that is to move item E to the top of the action items.
I'll second that.
Okay. It moved by Counselor Richardson and seconded by Counselor Runyon to approve the agenda with the exception of moving item E to the top of the action items. Any issues or problems with that? Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Audience participation during this portion of the meeting, anyone may speak on any subject which does not later appear on the agenda. Citizens are required to sign up in advance to be recognized. Up to three minutes per person will be allowed. Citizens are encouraged to ask questions with the understanding that the city can either answer the question tonight or refer that question to the appropriate staff member who will get back to you within a reasonable amount of time. If a response by the city is requested and that response is not ultimately provided or immediately provided, the speaker will be referred to the city manager for further action. We have three people signed up, but I suspect that two of them would like to speak on the food vendor ordinance. And if I'm wrong, come back up when I read your name. So first, we have Lisa Farquharson.
Good evening, Mayor Mays, City Council and staff. I have the privilege of finally welcoming you to our new Tourism Director, Lynn Cox. She brings over two decades of experience in leadership, client management, excursions, website development, customer service training. Her expertise will complement the foundation we've built and strengthen our tourism efforts moving forward, and really excited to have her on board.
Great.
Thank you for the warm welcome. I look forward to working with all of you and with the community to elevate what the Dells has to offer and the foundation that Lisa's already created with the Chamber.
Great, where are you from?
Originally, I am from the Dells.
Oh, great.
I grew up here.
Homegrown.
Homegrown.
So you're going to have any questions for Lisa or Lynn? Any other?
Did you attend the Dells Junior High School?
Yes, I did. When it wasn't as large as it is now.
Right, and what was your maiden name?
Denniston.
Fortunately, I didn't have her.
Fortunately, for who?
Earth.
Okay.
Can't quite say that, but all right.
It's okay.
Just curious.
Welcome aboard, Lynn. You've got a tough job ahead of you, but we know you can handle it. You have some good boss, good leadership there, so feel free to stop by anytime. Let us know how you're doing, okay?
Okay, great, thank you so much.
Thank you. Judy Merrill, you want to talk about the food vendor ordinance? Or did you want to talk about another subject? Sure, come on up, you've got three minutes. Please introduce yourself and your address.
There's a little button at the base. There you go. Okay. My name is Judy Merrill, and I live in the Dells. And what I'd like to just mention are, once again, the amount of electric bikes that are going really fast on the sidewalks throughout town, downtown area, and also on the outskirts of downtown area. They're waving in and out of traffic. They're going, a lot of them are going faster than I am in my car, and I go the speed limit. And also, the bicycles, the non-electric bicycles on the sidewalks downtown, as I've presented before, with a lot of information and data that it's unsafe for the pedestrians coming in and out of shops and then backing up to the electric, not only the electric bicycles, but the electric scooters. And they're not just children. I would say a majority of them are adults. And it's very dangerous, and it's becoming more dangerous. And I have gone through, gone in other towns, and I do not see them like I see them here in the Dells. And it's getting worse and worse. I've gone to two Traffic and Safety Commission meetings, and I'm going to go to a third one. And I presented a lot of data, more than what I've presented to you, twice to them. So I'm really hoping that all of you will consider the safety of our children, our adults. It may be your mother, your wife, your husband, any of the above, tourists that are coming off the boats. It is not safe, and it's getting worse. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. That'll do it for audience participation. Now, item six is the City Manager's Report. Mr. Clebs.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Most of last week, I was actually in Washington, part of the Community Outreach Team, twice annual visits. We met with Congressman Bentz, some of our other legislative representatives, including Wyden and Merkley, the National League of Cities, the National Association of Counties, the Council on Foreign Affairs, and a few other meetings in that jam-packed week. Looking specifically on this trip to a lot of the different policies rather than projects that may be impacting our community. Some of those include agricultural impacts, immigration issues, worker issues, forest issues. One of the ones that was most related to the city of the Dells was the Dells Watershed Act, which is legislation that was submitted by Congressman Bentz to facilitate a land transfer in our watershed to allow us to better manage our watershed and, in particular, clarify some of the ownership structures around our Crow Creek Dam. I'm happy to report that that legislation is continuing to move forward slowly but surely, and that it's a gentle push to get this across the finish line at the opportune moment. The week prior to that, I was a speaker along with Tyler Stone and Roger Klein and Lee Weinstein at the Oregon PUD Association with our involvement with Q Life. I organized and attended Columbia Gorge Regional City Managers Luncheon, where we had a couple attendees from the Washington side, but also from Moser Cascade Locks and Hood River. I attended the Chamber's banquet, and we have another local government academy session tomorrow night. Well, I'll be pitch hitting for our finance department. That academy is going really well. We have, I think, roughly 10 attendees who have been working through that. And I think this is the fifth time we've offered this academy, which really does a great job to increase transparency to the local government that we have here, have people become more familiar with what we do and what we don't do, and hopefully strengthen that volunteer pipeline to serve on City Council, to serve on the Traffic Safety Committee, to serve on some of the other commissions and ad hoc committees that we have here. One note I wanted to make sure that the council and the public was aware about, going back to Q Life, is that Q Life was preliminary, received a preliminary award, just under $10.5 million to expand fiber in our region. That is pending final confirmation from the federal NTIA, which is running the Oregon, running a BEED program across the entire United States. BEED stands for Broadband Equity and Access Deployment Grant Program. I think we got $10.45 million focused in the D-21 school district. So more information to come, but having that be listed as part of the Oregon submission to NTIA is a great, great step. And good work by the new staff at Q Life and the new structure that we've all been supporting and welcoming the PUD back into. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Clebs? Okay, we'll move on to item seven, Council Reports. We'll start with Counsel Runyon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the 11th, 9/11, to be exact, I attended the McClemmy Fire and Rescue Remembrance of the Twin Towers, the Pentagon being hit by terrorist airplanes, our planes, piloted by terrorists, and the third plane that passengers were able to down before it did its damage. McClemmy Fire and Rescue's been doing that ceremony at 7:00 a.m. on 9/11 for a number of years now to coincide with the 10 o'clock time zone when that actually happened at 10:07. On 9/19, I attended the League of Oregon Cities District Meeting at Hood River, a two-hour meeting basically on our revenue reform project. There were representatives there, five from Cascade Locks, several from Mopin, one from Condon, I think, and two from the Dells. Anyway, interesting. Anyway, interesting and details to come. The revenue reform project, in a nutshell, is about the communities that are having financial problems throughout the state and getting people to understand more of what revenues are actually available to cities and are not available to cities. There's a lot of misconceptions out there in their view. And also on the 19th, third Friday in September, is always national recognition of POW and MIA, prisoner of war and missing in action. And this week, so we had an event up at the multi-conflict memorial at Kelly Viewpoint that was open to the public and we had about 20 people there. And this week, going on right now, is Gold Star Family Week, those that have lost a member of their family while in active duty in the military. That's this week. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did attend Traffic Safety Committee last week. We canceled the Urban Renewal Agency Board Meeting last week, but we are expecting some items and updates to be advanced and to report back next month. I'm easing into board membership on Columbia Cascade Housing, getting familiar with their good work. And as you probably know, they just finished a successful accumulation of a funding package for a 50-plus unit housing project over on the west, far, far west side of our town. And last Friday, I was welcomed to visit Bread and Blessings in Action. So I know we'll be talking about that and that was very enlightening.
Council Randall.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just two items. On September 10th, I attended the Household Hazardous Waste Steering Committee Meeting. And then on September 11th, attended the Distinguished Citizens Award Banquet put on by the Chamber of Commerce.
Okay, Council Ring.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On 9/11, just as Counsel Runyon mentioned, I also attended the Mid-Columbia Fire 9/11 Remembrance. I also attended the POW MIA event on September 19th, that again Counselor Runyon mentioned. And Counselor Richardson already covered the URA meeting that was canceled. And something that I wanted to just mention, we need to maybe work on Matthew and Jonathan, is the sister cities update and possible changes to include them, be more inclusive directly with the city versus a separate relationship. That'll become, what's that?
You have a meeting tomorrow night?
Uh, yes.
Okay, thank you. Counsel McLaughlin.
Well, Monday, the 8th of September, I decided that I was going to go out and repair the garage door opener that had broken. So I was up on the ladder and consequently, I took a little fall off the ladder, ended up in ER, so I was at the emergency room when you were in your meeting that evening. So I'm back. I made a 25-year-old decision in a 73-year-old body and they're not compatible. So I did attend the airport meeting on the 19th in the morning and then the POW Missing in Action at the Kelly Viewpoint, that evening I did attend and that was well done. And then no urban renewal was canceled, so I look forward next month in attending that. That's my report.
Thank you. As far as my report goes, on September 11th, I attended the Chamber of Commerce Awards Banquet at the Readiness Center. On the 16th, I did an interview on KODL Coffee Break Radio. On the 17th, I attended a meeting at the courthouse with other public officials with Oregon Supreme Court Justice Megan Flynn. On the 18th, I attended the League of Oregon Cities Regional Meeting with Counsel Runyon in Hood River. And that same day, that afternoon, I attended a Portland Trailblazers rally and ribbon cutting at Riverfront Park, very exciting, and they're going to have a great year this year. So with that, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Items of a routine and non-controversial nature are placed on the consent agenda to allow the city council to spend its time and energy on the more important items and issues. Any counselor may request that an item be pulled from the consent agenda and be considered separately. Items pulled from the consent agenda will be placed on the agenda at the end of the Action Items Section. Tonight, we have two items on the consent agenda. First, approval of the September 8th council minutes, meeting minutes. And secondly, the authorization to purchase a skid steer for the Department of Public Works. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
And McLaughlin will second.
A move by Counsel Ring and seconded by Counsel McLaughlin to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Counsel Runyon.
Yeah, usually I give Amy a heads up early on, but I didn't get to her. I just let Abby know that there was a couple of spelling corrections in there, one which had us in a town to the east of Salem. We needed to add a "the" and a "e" to the Dells and Abby's taking care of that.
Counsel Runyon, would you pull the mic over?
Okay.
Perfect.
Let me say it all again?
No.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else? All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now we'll move to item 9E, which is in, oh, let's see here. There we go. This is consideration of an ordinance repealing two chapters of our municipal code and establishing a new chapter regarding mobile food vendors and transient merchants. Mr. Chandler, are you going to give the staff report?
I think I'll give the staff report.
Sorry, go ahead, Mr.
Just a moment.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Counsel Ring.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to, part of the Oregon Ethics Commission requires official, government officials to declare when they have a actual or potential conflict of interest. And in discussion, I have determined that I have a potential conflict, not an actual conflict, as I own a mobile food vendor. I am a mobile food vendor here within the city of the Dells. However, there is no direct impact to my business and I believe that I can be impartial and bring good conversation and information to the discussion to be had.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Kara, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Mays. Thank you to our planning director as well for joining me as we talk about mobile food vendors and transient merchants. As council might remember, two weeks ago today, we were seated here, some of you attended virtually, we had a discussion involving an interactive conversation with various community members and stakeholders on proposed changes to the city's regulations that are applicable to mobile food vendors and transient merchants. Following that discussion, staff wanted to confirm some feedback that we'd received from council that evening and has prepared a slightly amended version of proposed ordinance, general ordinance number 25-1419. The only substantive change that followed that discussion, as confirmed by council, was to a particular provision of our proposed amendment that concerns the future land use process that would be required for vendors or merchants who occupy the same lot or parcel for longer than 12 months and are not otherwise required to go through the city's land use process. The proposed change is now to offer a 12-month race period from the time that the city adopts that land use process in the future before they will need to secure that approval to continue operations. Other than that one change, I believe, which was recommended by a member of the audience that night and council seemed to resonate with it, no other changes are worth mentioning here or substantive really in any way. I wanted to remind the mayor now as good a time as any, and there's this Oregon State statute, ORS 294.160, that requires the city to provide an opportunity for anyone who's interested to comment on the enactment of any ordinance that prescribes a new fee or increases the fee or changes in any way the way a fee is calculated. I mentioned this in the staff report a few weeks ago, there are no new fees associated with this proposed amendment to the city's code. The city adopts new fees as part of its fee schedule, at least annually, and that's not on the menu tonight. But we do have some changes to fee waivers and adjustments in our code, largely expanding them to make that and along with many other changes to make this ordinance much more business-friendly for vendors and merchants to get started in our community. And so it'd be very appropriate for the mayor to at least offer the public an opportunity to comment on this enactment here tonight.
Usually before we do that, I always like to have the council ask questions. Okay, and I would ask the council not to deliberate or give your opinion yet, just any questions of the staff and then we'll let the public comment. Anybody on the council have a question about the proposal? Counsel Ring.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the propose, a couple of questions. One of the things that I was thinking about reading this is workload on current cities, city staff with their current process, with their current licensing and adjusting the potential adjustment here to go through SPR and whatnot. Is there an estimate of the difference between the benefit to, you know, is there some efficiency that comes into play or something like that where you're not processing, you're not going to be processing licensing anymore, you're going to be going through the SPR process? So is there some time saved with that?
Well, I think I'll jump in just briefly before I pass it over to Josh, if you have any thoughts on that, Josh. But the land use process is a much more permanent process than these temporary licenses are intended to be used for. So, you know, somebody goes through a land use process, well, a piece of land goes through a land use process once, it doesn't have to go through it every month for a renewal or, you know. And so there should be significant administrative efficiency improvements just by the nature of the type of approval, even if for sure land use processes are a little bit more involved usually. Yeah, big picture. Just candidly, the city, you know, when we were going through this and had to notice or made the decision, we didn't have to, but we wanted to, notice all the different mobile food vendors of this potential ordinance a couple of weeks ago or a month ago now, we only had four active licenses. So it's not like this was a tremendous administration, you know, focus of the city. And in fact, I think with the attention that's been put on it and through these proposed amendments to make the process even easier for people to come in and get one, I think honestly, we might see an uptick for a little bit, but I think it'd be worth it, considering the city's had this on the books in some way or another since the late 90s and we only had four active ones, so.
Okay, and maybe for Director Chandler, how long does it currently take to go through an SPR? Not meaning like new construction, new development, but is there an estimate of staff's time to do that?
So we have, we make all landies decisions within 120 days. It can go fast or short, depending on the material that's provided to us, will we have a complete application? That is typically what takes the longest time is actually from the time an application is submitted till we deem it complete. There's a lot of back and forth, a lot. So once it's deemed complete, we've typically moved through the process pretty quick. I would have to say on staff load, and we talk about, I mean, we have short-term rentals in front of us a little while ago, now we're sitting at around 50 short-term rentals annually. That takes a lot of time compared to maybe a land use applicant. I've been once, a little bit of a delay for an applicant, but as far as staff time, those annual permits and licenses, actually that has quite a bit of a load on staff ultimately.
Okay, so there's an upfront Austin staff time, but you're saying, you're suggesting that long-term, this new process would be more efficient, potentially more business-friendly?
Yeah, efficient for sure because we would process it once and we wouldn't have to go back through that anything again.
Yeah, thanks.
I'd like to remind everyone to please talk directly into the microphone so that everyone can hear. Any other questions for the staff? Counsel Runyon.
Yeah, and Abby, add one more to the list. I did spend time with the city attorney Kara a couple of days ago on this very subject, making sure I had some clarification. And I just, if I missed it in your talk just now, Jonathan, it's just the vertigo in my right ear is still not complete yet. For people who need the permits in their upcoming form and they already have a permit, will, so when will the new one take effect, when their other one runs out or does, or will be?
So the ordinance will take effect if it's adopted tonight, within 30 days after adoption. So today's the September 22nd, so October 21st is when this new ordinance will take effect. And if you want to get a new license after October 21st or starting October 21st, if that's 30 days from now, you would be following the rules and regulations as they exist in the proposed ordinance. And so it would start fresh in essence, right?
And the other thing that I brought up with you, and I just want to make clear because I was on Zoom and just flat missed it, the ones that are, where there's five renewals and so forth, I missed the part where when those five renewals run out, that's over, but it does not preclude the vendor from going to a different address and taking out a new permit at that address with a new form and approval of the landowner and that sort of thing.
Yeah, that's correct.
So they can continue their business, but they would have to go to a different location.
They can continue at the same location if they'd like to go through the TBD land use process as well.
Okay, so it could be an either or.
Either or, they could stay there, you know, indefinitely and just go through land use like any other vendor would if they were in a brick and mortar. Or they can pack up their, you know, mobile food vending unit and go to a different property. It's sort of the nature of the mobile food vending is the mobility of it and go to a different property and go with another type one license for 30 bucks and go.
And the other thing was just to make clear that there's nothing in this new information here that changes any of the existing rights of way on public byways, sidewalks, streets, et cetera. Nothing's affected in this new ordinance, those laws are already there.
The only thing that's, that really addresses right-of-way in this entire ordinance is carving out ice cream trucks. That was pretty much it currently, under a reading of our code, technically, I guess, ice cream trucks are not allowed. And so we wanted to ensure that if we were going to be impacting the right-of-way and vending in the right-of-way, that we had a carve out, a narrow carve out for them. But yeah, otherwise, no, nothing has changed. Mobile food vending and transient merchants have always been prohibited from operating in the right-of-way.
Thank you.
Mayor, one more.
Counsel Ring.
Sorry, I do have one more question. The land use process, so currently, this proposed ordinance is, my understanding, not getting rid of the type two mobile food vendor, but it's, that will continue on. So if, my understanding is that if there was a new mobile food vendor and they fell under the definition of a type two, they could come get a license. If they decided to move in that 12-month period, or at the end of that 12-month period, they decided to move to a new location, they would then get a new license. But if they decided to stay at that location at the end of the 12 months when their, that current license expires, they would have to go through a land use process that's not fully defined yet.
Yeah, once that, once that happens, like once the city adopts an amendment to Title 10, our land use code, which again, there's a state law component of it, I think we had a good discussion on that two weeks ago. Until then, which again, you know, as far as the CDD and the city attorney's office, like I don't foresee it happening in the next year even. So until then, the type two licenses will be eligible for renewals.
Okay, so if somebody came in under this new ordinance, say they came in on October 22nd, the day after, they got a new mobile two, or type two mobile food vendor license, they would be good until October 21st of the following year?
Yeah.
If we don't have a clear and objective and defined land use process for that, I believe during the last city council meeting during discussion, it was a SPR light. I believe during the last city council meeting during discussion, it was a SPR light. So if we don't have that within that 12 month period when they, or sorry, when they're, when they're when that license expires, if there's not a land use process already clearly defined with requirements, then they would renew their type two for another 12 months.
Yeah, as long as they were otherwise eligible for a type two, like if they were still operating and no, you know, the same place with the same type of operation and they, you know, they weren't like in violation of their permit. Yeah, yeah, they would continue operating on October 22nd, 2026. Yeah.
Thanks.
Other questions? Counsel Randall.
If a vendor does decide to relocate, does it have to be to an entirely different property? Or is there a specified distance he has to move?
No, it's up, it's up to them. If they stay on the same property, they don't typically need a new license. But if they go to a different property, they'll need a, they'll need a new license. And you can hold more than one license at the same time. You know, if somebody wants to sell sandwiches, they could go catch, you know, the lunch rush at, you know, by like Home Depot and then for dinner, they can set up somewhere else on a different part of the property or a different part of the city down the street or across town. They could have more than one license at the same time. Yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, at this point in the meeting, we're going to ask anyone in the audience if they'd like to address the city council for up to three minutes. Please come forward, please raise your hand first. I'll call on you, come forward, give us your name and address. And Teresa, would you like to go first? Reinforcements is on their way.
My name is Teresa Uregi-Zeman. And I live here in the Dallas, Oregon. I'm with Bread and Blessings, as you all know. And I know that you have many, probably many questions about feeding the homeless and where we're at at this moment and how we got there, you all know. You know, we are looking for a different site. There's a number of places that have said that they're looking and they have to go to their boards and discuss this. This ordinance, I find that we don't want to work against the poor. They're the citizens of the Dows. Many of these people, most of them actually grew up here. And I think that we all have an obligation to help each other. And I would really just ask, I mean, I'm willing to work with the city, but not against the poor. Okay. And, and I think we need to go and do things that are reasonable so that they're not burdened more than they already are. I know that you have a place and the, what I call, I call it the pod place, but other people call, or I call it the rock pit out by the river where they used to have the little houses for the poor. That really isn't a very suitable place at all. The people that live downtown here would not be able to walk that far. And they don't have cars, those that are at the Commodore, the Annex and other small studio apartments here that come to Bread and Blessings would not be able to go out there. Now those that live way on the West Second Street at the end, they're used to walking. You know, they have to come in for other services, whether that's at St. Vincent de Paul or Food Banks or wherever. And so that doesn't seem to bother them, though they don't come every day. But a number of them, I mean, they might come Monday, maybe not Tuesday, but then they come back on Wednesday for meals. And, and then they take meals back to their camps also for those persons that are watching the camp.
You got about 20 seconds.
Yeah, I, you know, if anyone has any questions, you know, please ask.
I have one, you said that you want to work with the city, but not against the board? What board?
The poor.
Oh, the poor, I'm sorry.
I will not, I, you know, I, I put the poor first, I'm sorry. That's how it is, you know?
I just didn't hear, I didn't hear you correctly, it's my fault.
Yes, the poor, yes. Working with them for 33 plus years. That's just.
Well, I think I said it last, two weeks ago, I don't think there was anybody here that doesn't appreciate the work that you do. So, thank you.
I think I truly believe that this council has a lot of power and they can go and make the life of those persons better. And, and really try to, like I did, I went to them and asked them what they were in need of. They said a place to eat, they said showers. They said laundry services. And that's why we got that building at 315 West Third. I think that if I can do that, surely you who have a lot of power can help them. Ask them what they're in need of. How can we help them have a better life, have a better future? And, and, and they will start working with you, just like they work with me. They will start working with you also, making this city a better city. When they feel that there's animosity towards them, they're going to do things that are not really appropriate, maybe.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Fine, may I say, please come to the kitchen at 315 West Third. We're there from 5:30 until approximately 10 minutes to nine. Come to the kitchen and see what we do, feel free to.
Thank you. Next, anybody would like to raise your hand if you'd like to speak? Anybody else? Come forward, Ms. Merrill. You have three minutes.
I just want to thank Teresa for sharing what she just shared. And I hope all of us in this room have heard her, her words coming from her heart and from her experiences. And I want to thank Dan for going down to Bread and Blessings to witness it and to just be there to feel it. And I just really like this quotation at the bottom of the page. I've referred to many times over the years. City of the Dows, by working together, we will provide services that enhance the vitality of the Dows. And it's not how we're dressed or what we look like, it's every human being. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Last call. Okay. Back to deliberations on the city council, any more questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question and a comment.
Counsel Richardson.
Thank you. My question, I apologize to Counsel Ring for putting him on the spot like this, but it's what you signed up for. In your opinion, Ben, and given your experience, do you feel like this ordinance would be helpful? Or hindering to someone starting or running a mobile food cart? Or neither?
That's a great question. I think there's portions of it that are a question mark for somebody, for somebody like myself that currently operates a food truck or food cart in, in the city of the Dows. The piece that I think is the most conflicting is the TBD land use change. It's hard, it is extremely difficult for somebody to open a brick and mortar restaurant here anywhere in the United States right now. Commercial loans and things like that, unless you, unless you've really got some experience and some capital behind you, it is difficult. That, that's the, the beauty of what the state of Oregon has provided, right? The, the state of Oregon, I believe, sort of led the charge for mobile food vendors. They used to have a stigma about them that was awful and dirty and just generally, you know, it's they're at construction sites or something like that. They're not for people to go to on the daily. I think the industry here in the state of Oregon has completely flipped that on its head. And what I've observed across the state and even in, even in other states, like Colorado, California, Washington State, you know, basically the entire West Coast. I think that they've, they've provided an avenue for small business owners and entrepreneurs to break into the food services industry. The barrier to entry for a mobile food vendor is very low. You, you, you still have to do all the, the licensing, the health department compliance. There's, there's a lot to do to open a small business in general, but generally speaking, a, a mobile food vendor, a food cart is a really good way for new entrepreneurs, you know, just like myself, I love to barbecue. And it's a much lower barrier to entry than going in and signing a commercial lease that you're tied to or going and getting a commercial loan for a piece of property that may or may not have a building on it and purchasing it, that too has its, its drawbacks. And so that barrier to entry for a lot of folks, especially coming out of COVID the last five years and whatnot, and just the state of people trying to recover. People are making, you know, changes in their career. And this is one of those things that they've looked to. And for me, if I was to open a cart, I, I would be perplexed. It would be a question mark for me personally because, again, because the land use portion of this is not clearly defined. And I, I know that it will be, but it's difficult for me to wrap my head around a governing body approving an ordinance without clear and objective requirements on the onset, right? So it's, we're, we have a decision to make in front of us this evening, all of us, that that will that will not, it, it effectively doesn't change the, the current like procedure and modes of operation and the licensing and stuff that we have in effect today. But it does, that like nebulosity a year from now, right? And it's going to take some time to get through land use because it's got, it's a very, it can be a lengthy process, right? And I think the extending the, you know, call it grace period or renewal beyond the six months that it was originally is outstanding. I think that that's a good, a good move. But I'm still, I'm still conflicted with the lack of clear and objective requirements. It's a question mark.
Appreciate it. Thank you for your insights on that.
Any other comments or discussion?
I have a couple of comments, if you'd.
Go ahead, Counsel Richardson.
I want to shift gears a little bit and.
Well, that's what this is for.
I've had a, I had a very fruitful conversation with Teresa on Friday. And not just down at the kitchen, just, but, but later on, she and I had a, had a good conversation. And then I told her, and I'll say it and tell you all that, you know, I find that work admirable. And the duration of, the duration of time, you know, the years, in fact, decades you've put in are really inspiring. It's really something to be well admired. I guess for us on the other side, and this is not a surprise because again, I'm sharing a little bit of our conversation. There's a cost, there's a, there's a heavy cost in terms of time. You know, it sounds like almost a full time job for Teresa and other volunteers and dollars. And they go around and get donations from the bakeries. It's, it's, it's an impressive effort and it costs a lot and to make that happen. And then there's another cost, which is a fraction of the clients who congregate and camp and are hard on a, on a place. My sense of it, you can correct me or people that work in that, in, in the charitable outreach can correct or confirm, but there's a fairly small number, I don't know, six, eight, 10, 12 folks that appear to be really afflicted, you know, suffering or struggling with some real issue, mental issues or substance abuse or some, some combination of things that is are some very sad cases. And also they afflict a place, you know, they, they, we saw that at, at the Pentland Street neighborhood. And the neighbors there and the people going about their business who are not involved and not, not, who are just otherwise living there. The housed folks, I guess you'd say, they went through really tough times for a few years. And I think part of that is those costs just haven't been reckoned with. And, and we feel like maybe, or at least I feel like the city needs to wrestle with those. You know, I'm concerned. I'm concerned that our neighbors running businesses downtown, some of whom are already struggling, are going to get hit really hard if we lose the cruise ship business. And so the location, as you said, we need to move the location. And that's not the heart of this ordinance, but obviously it's wrapped up in, in taking back or setting boundaries. Let's, let's say, setting boundaries in the public right of way. And so I certainly don't want us to work against you, but at the same time, I feel like those folks need to be advocated for as well. And so we're a bit of a loggerheads or an impasse, or maybe a better way to put it is we're at a point where we need to take action. Hopefully as a community and not, not like as antagonists. That's not really the city's area of expertise, right? Dealing with folks that are that afflicted, that troubled or, or having, going through those kinds of times, that takes expertise, whether it's life experience or training. There are agencies that have that, like Center for Living, right? They have staff and experts and that's their mission to some degree at least. MCAC, you know, deals with houseless folks and people going through difficult times and trying to get them on their feet. I feel like this is a conversation we need to have a number of people at the table, including yourself. And, and, and though it's not our job as a city, I mean, tech, that's technically true. It's not, I think it behooves us to make sure the city, the staff and whomever appropriate is also involved and find a spot. This is just my opinion, but I'm supposing other counselors, after never conversations we've had in the last several years, might well agree that we need to find a better spot that's safe and effective for you. I would like to see you continue your good work as long as you're able and want to. continue your good work as long as you are able and want to. And maybe a longer term spot. It's not A, in a neighborhood or B, downtown. And I don't know that there is a perfect spot that's not one of those and also really handy for you, but I feel I I'm hopeful that if we work together, we can have a give and take enough to find something that's workable. That's my hope. And that's my comment at this point. I'm hopeful and I think we need to. I would hate to exact cost on some of our neighbors at because because we're helping some and then end up hurting others. I I feel like the net has to be benefit for everybody if possible.
Anybody else? Council Randall?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question for Teresa if I could. What would be the direct impact of this on your operations? If you would you shut down immediately and and not reopen anywhere? Would you attempt to try to operate at the what you consider an unsuitable location to give it, you know, in the interim?
Teresa, you want, would you mind coming up and using the microphone? Thank you.
Well, I'm not a person that goes against the law. People have to eat. And if we don't feed them, you're going to have pilfering. You have to think about the consequences. If you do things that are going to be against the people, they're going to do, they're going to fight back and it'll be pilfering. And I think that we do really well on keeping these people fed with food. And but more than that, I have seen people come for years and then get help and then and then go on with their lives because they receive hope. If they're, you know, and and they receive also from the volunteers, from myself, a lot of love and acceptance. And that that goes a long ways for us human beings, as you know. And so I would, I would, I'm sorry, but I will continue to feed them. I don't know how that will happen, but it will happen. I will have to. So I hope that we're not put in a situation where we where, you know, the city council says you're not ever going to feed them again because I think you better go and ask God about that.
Well, that's that is that is certainly not the question before us tonight. It's do we set a boundary in the pub? Well, do we set a boundary in the public right of way and say?
Exactly. And I didn't say that I would be out that street on First Street.
I'm sorry, say that again.
I didn't say that I would be on First Street, but I won't stop the feeding. I don't know if this is an appropriate time, but to ask this question. But when I went to St. Vincent de Paul Board, one of the individuals said, well, Aram did not sign the dotted line saying that they would never sue us again for a nuisance. Is there a reason that there was no signing on the dotted line at the end of this lawsuit?
We wanted to keep the option open in case those problems arose again. I can only speak for myself.
Can you have trust that it's not going to happen and sign on the dotted line so we could go and feed there if it was if it was necessary? Since I mean, I did do the planning commission, all of the work I got them, we did a lot of fundraising for that building, even though it's in St. Vincent de Paul's name. Um, I wasn't part of St. Vincent de Paul. This was bread and blessings. Would you ever have enough trust that it's not going to happen again?
I think if we did, we would have signed, we would have signed that piece of paper. Go ahead.
I think I think the mayor was in the room when we had that conversation with St. Vincent de Paul and their attorney and while I think those things are true that the mayor said generally, I want to be clear and I think the public has, you know, every right to know that we offered to sign a settlement agreement many times with St. Vincent de Paul and their attorney refused. And so the answer to your question of why is there no signature on the dotted line is not for our lack of trying. We tried a lot. He refused to sign anything. And his name is Greg Lynch and you can ask the board if you'd like to. They have no reason to lie to you. Neither do I. Their attorney refused to sign anything. And it's it's unfortunate because the city for a long time thought that we could have a a good working relationship with that attorney and sort of get to a place where we, everybody would feel comfortable. Um, and he he took a very obstinate approach and and quite a bit of bad faith.
You know, I don't have a vote in this, but now that the issue has come up and I just want to follow up on what Counsel Richardson had said, and that is that this is more than a cruise ship and downtown business issue, in my opinion. When issues come up the way they have over there on Union Street, I think the city has an obligation to get involved when even the best intentioned services and activities such as yours interfere with the general public's right to a safe and clean neighborhood and public right of way. And again, I'll say it for the third time, no, everyone here, as far as I'm concerned, appreciates the job that you do. But um, my statements speak for itself. So thank you very much. Anybody else?
Mr. Mayor, would this be an appropriate time to make a suggestion to a minor change in the proposal? So one of the things that I so separate from the the discussion with bread and blessings, I I want, I just want to address the land use piece again. I think our, first off, I think our land use process, our SPR process is it it is robust and it is appropriate. It's appropriate for new development or significant changes to an approved use, right? But I'm concerned that for a type two mobile food vendor that stays in place for longer than 12 months and has a lease with a a private property owner more than likely. But, you know, they need to pull power or they need to pull uh fresh water or something like that. I think that the current SPR process is maybe a little bit burdensome for a business like that because they're not building a building and they're not they're not putting a ton of infrastructure. They're not, you, when you create a food pod, there's a lot to that, right? In in comparison, uh, to to directly address, you know, from a a food vendor perspective, right? So I think for a pod, absolutely, our our land use code, I think, covers that. But I'm concerned about the level of effort that it would take to currently pass our land use process through the SPR as it stands right now. For a type two mobile food vendor that just needs to hook up a hose to get fresh water, right? Because it's not defined, what I what I would recommend is we're because we're going to have to potentially come back at this anyways. Once we do have land use defined and it's clear, it's objective, there's defined requirements and 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 whatnot. I'm wondering if there is a way to continue with a type two mobile food vendor as they would be similar to what the state of Oregon would 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 define a type two vendor, right? So like, I actually think I I need to go back and look. It might be a type three, but I think that until we can come back with a set of requirements for those businesses to, you know, be measured against to make sure that they're in compliance and we do it right. I I would, I'm wondering how we could modify this proposed ordinance in such a manner that it would allow a type two mobile food vendor to effectively use uh, city services on a temporary basis. I and the reason I say this is I go, this is not a maybe it's not a typical example, but I I remember the the owners of uh the vehicle that I purchased were temporary, but they were tied into city services at the time and it there is, there there was no maybe there was no clear definition at the time, right? But the property owner provided power. There was a meter. They paid their bill. So I want to, I want to stress the importance of making sure that if we're going to pass, if we are going to say yes to bringing a new ordinance into law that we have those requirements defined when we vote on them, all I'm asking. So is there a modification that could be had that would satisfy that this evening so that we don't have a TBD, we don't have TBD language effectively in an ordinance? Does that make sense? Sorry, I think that was long-winded, but I
I think there's a way you could go around it um or get to it. But I would recommend that if you are connecting to city utilities, you're going through a land use process. That that would just be my thought. I know a lot of carts come prepared with gray water and fresh water. Um, I know it's common for permits to be permitted in other cities, licenses in other cities where it's a you can be there for up to a year, but you don't have any seats. You don't have any tables. You are a cart that's parking on one site, but you're not connected to utilities. I'm not, you know, I I'm not one way or the other.
The city doesn't have a a legal mechanism to assess SDCs against people that impact the city's utility infrastructure unless they're tied to a property, right? So this goes almost even beyond land use at that point. We start talking about taxpayers subsidizing the impacts associated with non-residential or non-industrial or non-commercial utility use. In the example that you used earlier, Counsel Ring about power, I mean, the city doesn't have an electric utility. We have water and sewer and, right? So the impacts associated with that use, it's 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 hard, it's it's hardly just, you know, like the 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 policy implication of let me just grab a hose from over here, right? Like it's it's not a sustainable way to do business anyway. Certainly not for the city and and our utility infrastructure for the public. With that said, I I'm not so sure that there's that big of a, uh, I'm not trying to trivialize your concern, but I think maybe your concern is maybe reading too much into the TBD component. Council regularly adopts policy frameworks that are later implemented with more granularity. That that's kind of like the whole way the council does. I mean, even in this ordinance and like most ordinances, it'll say the council shall set the fee by resolution. And then six months later or whenever, I'll come to council with a proposed fee schedule that actually implements the policy of that ordinance that was adopted six months beforehand by imposing the fee. Other other ordinances that have been adopted by this council even authorize the city manager to adopt rules that are not inconsistent with the intent of this chapter. So the councils, like I I can see it in my head and I've written it and councils adopted it, you know, the city manager shall implement rules not inconsistent with the intent of this chapter. And those rules shall be publicized and the councils, again, setting a policy framework to be later implemented. In both of those cases, well, really in the first case, council still has the authority to update the fee schedule itself and and has this opportunity to weigh in and it's always in a public meeting and there's always tons of interaction. And again, that that's sort of what this would do here. But here's here's the thing, even if I like recommended different language other than TBD land use, that section. None of that changes the reality, which is that the use of land in the city is governed by our LUDO. So it's true anyway that it's included in the ordinance as a helpful tip for the reader. If I'm, you know, if I move to a new city and I want to say, hey, I want to open up a food cart here. I wonder what that's like. I'm not going to go look at the land use code if I don't know that there's anything to do with mobile food and land use. So the intent behind the provision in the ordinance is to guide the reader to say, oh, okay, there is a land use element here. And if it still exists at the time that they're reading it, it'll be amended to reflect whatever that code section is. But otherwise, it it doesn't actually, it's not really actionable. It's there's, you're right, that there's no one thing that you that this council can do tonight is include some guardrail language that you can say, you know, this will be covered by a TBD land use decision at some point in the future. And as the adopting council, because, you know, there could be a whole new council here in three years or maybe this code hasn't been updated and you at that point, I think that new council or whenever this thing gets updated would appreciate having some guardrails maybe that say something like they can't be inconsistent or that they must be less stringent than the city's site plan review procedures, some language like that. But at any point the land use component needs to get updated. It has to go through a completely separate process.
Understood.
Yeah.
Okay, any other comments or questions?
I better chime in on this.
Counsel McLaughlin.
All right. So what you're asking is number two is uh make minor modifications and then move to adopt general ordinance number twenty-five fourteen nineteen, correct?
Yeah, I again, I just, I want to make sure that it's clear and objective and I, I don't know, I'm not I'm not sure. I I appreciate the extra time that we had from our last little city council meeting to think about this a little bit more, but it's so hard for me to get past.
I understand.
Well, and if I if I may add briefly and and Josh and Jonathan, please um let me know if I'm skewing this one way or another, but I think it's important to remember or to call attention to where we're where we're coming from with where we might be headed. And so specifically in our current code, when we look at a type two, for example, you know, there's a, there's the requirement that it is not connecting to public utilities and that the type two permit is good for a period of up to 12 months and then can be renewed only once for another 12-month period. And then they would go through the existing site plan review process, just like a type three. So I think this 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 TBD provision could conceivably allow a type two permit holder, ideally not, but could have that type two permit for much longer, even than the 24 months noted in our current code. And would allow us again, that opportunity to go through and have the conversation on what that really looks like with council's guidance. And then address some of the the issues or some of the constraints or some of the burdens that are in the the current ordinance for new food cart vendors coming in or ones that have been here for 18 months or 36 months or whatever it may be. And allow that kind of business-friendly environment with a process to, you know, get us back together on the same same page and push forward.
I think that there's something interesting to take away from that, too. I guess what we're really talking about for the type two is a permanent connection. At some point in time, they absolutely tie into city services like water because they have to fill their tanks. So it's it's temporary. What's to say that somebody doesn't stay on a piece of property with their temp, their current temporary basis uh, under a type two provision where they're not permanently connected to, say, city water? I think that's an easy example. And continue to operate. If there's no permanent connection to city utilities effectively, then is there, is there some way to word that in this language that it's it's very specific that when you tie into to permanently to services? Does that make sense? Which is effectively what we currently have in our current code, I think.
Aside from it no longer operational after two years. So you effectively may be wanting what we have with a type two, but it can be renewed annually over and over and over again, type of thing.
Till we have a land, I think until we have a land use process defined, I think that that might be like what we're facing. Rather than not allowing people to continue to renew their license, I think that it's it's also, I think it's frankly motivation to get that land use process defined so that your office doesn't have to continue to process licenses. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, I think-
I think it's that guardrail language, maybe, that our city attorney mentioned earlier. That's clear. It's objective. We know, we know what is and is not included. As long as they're not permanently tied to city services, then why can't they continue to license themselves until, and operate legally until we have that land use process defined?
How's that any different than what's in the proposed amendment tonight in front of us?
I can't hear you. I-
Oh, sorry. How's that any different? Yeah. How's that any different than what's in the ordinance tonight? And I'm not asking that, like, to argue. I don't know if I see it.
Though, what I'm seeing in the proposed ordinance is that there is, you can only renew, actually, you can't even do that in this. You can come in and get a type two license. You can operate for a year. And you can renew it once and never again. So if you're there for three years, and we still don't have a land use process defined, then they have to, they have to go to our current chapter, our current land use code, and go through a full-blown SPR.
Unless they're connected to utilities or offering drive-through services, or want more seating than what our code allows, or operate a food pod? No, they don't. They just continue operating with a type two that they renew annually until we adopt something.
And I think, but that's what's confusing is what we've talked about here is that a type two food vendor that does not move, does not change its location, doesn't go to another property lot, can't renew after two years.
Current, what the current code?
The saying is, we should allow them to renew their license as long as they're not tying into city services permanently, so that they can continue to operate legally. What I'm saying is I don't, it's not clear in the proposed ordinance that they can continue to license their business.
Well, I mean, I'll clarify it. I think it is clear, but maybe I'm missing something, too. But if you're looking on page, what, five of 15 of the ordinance, which is page 52 out of 62 in your packet, looking at the top of the page, number two, "Type two licenses and permits are valid for 12 months from the issue date and shall not be renewed, except as provided in that section 80630D3A2," which is right underneath that. So D3, three is land use and development, A prohibition and exceptions, number two. So going back, and that's the land use thing that we've been talking about. So type two licenses are valid for 12 months from the issue date and shall not be renewed, except as this section says right here about the TBD land use, where if the city doesn't have an applicable land use process, by the time it becomes required for that person that you're describing who's operating and staying on the same place for years, if we don't have an applicable land use process by then for them, that person, that vendor, may continue their activity through new or renewed type two licenses until 12 months after the city adopts it. I think it's trying to do exactly what you're asking.
So if it takes us five years, they can renew it for five years?
Yeah.
I misread that, then.
Does that make a difference for you, Counselor?
I think that does.
Good. Okay.
Let me say my piece of honesty.
Oh, please proceed, Counselor McLaughlin.
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, but as I read this ordinance, its purpose is to protect welfare, public health, and safety. That's a primary reason that we're looking at this. Also, to reduce impacts to pedestrian and vehicular traffic on streets and sidewalks. It's the public right of way. As I was in Portland doing business, I was walking down a sidewalk that was completely, there was no way that I could pass without going out into the street where there was traffic, and everything was covered. And we, as a city, we need to be able to regulate and keep our rights of way open for all citizens, including anyone that may be wheelchair-bound, anyone that's disabled. They would not have been able to progress down the street free. And so, city has a responsibility to try to maintain a balance, not to infringe on one group and protect another. But in this case, when you have a person in a wheelchair, and we have to give priority. So that's one of the things that is driving my thought on this, is how do we maintain all of the things we're trying to do to reduce the impact to pedestrians and vehicular traffic? Now, if we have someone that's selling, let's just use flowers on the corner. And what it does, on most corners, it wouldn't impede, but it could possibly, and this provision would give the city police the ability to regulate anyone that's perhaps impinging on someone coming to and from either with a car or walking. So it gives flexibility to police to enforce an ordinance. That's why, that's why we do these things, is so that it's not for the general public, but it's for those particular reasons that you can take action, and we can find some way of maintaining the person's right on both sides, all right? I also want to, when we have people rolling in that, say, for example, selling honey, selling watermelon, selling wherever, all over town, this gives us a chance to regulate some of those, and maybe encourage people to become supporting our farmer market that's on Saturday. So that we want to encourage that in our community because we're supporting local farmers. And we also have a controlled environment that, once that farmer's market is clean and it returns to the park-like conditions, right? So in this ordinance, that supports that. I think we're dealing with, on Pentland Street, I think we were dealing with some issues of violence. We were dealing with issues of unsightly, it was trash. All of those things, the conditions there were unhealthy. It is no longer unhealthy on Pentland Street. We have some conditions in the downtown corridor that are unsightly. There's some inviolence happening in the downtown corp. And what I'm saying is, it's our responsibility as a city government to maintain and find a balance, so that you can go ahead and distribute food and not impede on other people their right to walk freely, using right-of-way, sidewalks, streets. So that's what we're trying to pursue. We're trying to find a balance between that, in my opinion. So, in stating, no, no one wants to impair your desire to provide food for people. We all, everyone has to eat. Everyone has to survive. It's just how we do that. It's causing conflicts and problems for other populations that we have to balance. Pentland was a good example of that. All right. I've said my piece. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments? Any questions? Well, the public comment is over, but I'll allow it unless there's an objection from any member of the city council. Please be brief.
As long as it's not just repeating what we've already heard, we've got notes.
Not repeat anything. This is in reference to the Columbia Gorge News, I mean, the Columbia Columbia Community Connection newspaper. There was an article in the newspaper last week, the hidden differences among people living on the street. And Terry, who some of you might have met, he was the former executive director at St. Vincent's De Paul in Lane County in Eugene. He came in 2021, and I met him. He spoke to the St. Paul's, and he also, some of you were there, too. And he invited members of the board and also the city to come down to Lane County to learn what has worked so well that he created and others created under his being the director. And as far as I know, nobody came down there.
I did.
Did you?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. And I'm just wondering if we can start there again, as far as learning what has worked in other communities and moving forward. And then there was, it was an excellent article, if you all haven't read it. Then there was an article in the newspaper in the Columbia Gorge News this past week regarding the homelessness, too. And the one in the Columbia Gorge, in one of the articles, they were talking about the levels of homelessness, the people, the human beings that they are, and what we, all of us, may have trouble with in putting them in a box, in a category. And I think it's real important to educate ourselves, the city. Like somebody has said, you all have a lot of power and decision-making. And times have changed, situations have changed. And I think we need to really look at what is real out there. Our two newspapers have done a great news coverage in the last couple weeks. Thank you.
Thank you.
I've been to those ones in Eugene as well, in another political life.
And I met with Mr. McDonald. He is very knowledgeable, and I believe he's retired now, but I probably had three different meetings with Mr. McDonald, talking about homelessness in the Dalles, homelessness in Eugene, homelessness across the state. I'm also a member of the Oregon Mayors Association Board of Directors. I think I have a pretty good feel for what's going on in the rest of the state. And it's a very difficult issue, that's for sure, everywhere. Anybody else? Anybody like to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt general ordinance number 25-1419 as presented by title only.
Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
It's been moved by Counselor Randall and seconded by Counselor Richardson to adopt the ordinance by title only. Does anybody have any objection for Ms. Harrow to read the ordinance by title only and forego a reading of the entire ordinance?
No objection.
Discussion? Are you going to ask for discussion?
But anybody have any objection to her reading it by title only?
No, none.
No? Okay, Counsel run in?
Just under discussion to put out there again, whether we enacted this new version or left the old one in place till Counselor Ring's thoughts were implemented or completed. Even if we didn't enact a new ordinance, the city already has rules about sidewalks and public right of way, so it wouldn't change anything as far as current law. Is that correct? We already have that law.
The law under our current code prohibits any-
Yes or no, that's all I need.
It's not a yes or no question. So there's a yes answer, but it's not very helpful for council. The correct answer is that we currently prohibit people from being vendors or merchants in the right of way, but the reason that some people in this room or probably in this room tonight is because we're expanding the definition of what it means to vend or be a merchant, to encompass things that don't involve money. That's why our current ordinance hasn't really impacted Bread and Blessings' operations, because they've been doing it from a position of charity. And so tonight's ordinance, it doesn't change the prohibition of being a vendor in the right of way. It just changes the definition of what it means to be a vendor.
Yeah, exactly. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? Sarah, will you please read the ordinance by title only?
Sorry, Mr. Mayor. I didn't speak fast enough.
Go ahead.
Yep, just for fellow counselors, after the vote, I will ask for your support to direct staff to engage with Bread and Blessings and other community partners. I think a number of other folks ought to be engaged in the conversation to help find an appropriate, safe, effective place for Bread and Blessings, and perhaps others doing similar work. It's not in a neighborhood, not downtown.
I'm sorry, what was that last few words?
That is not in a neighborhood and not downtown. So not on First Street, not on Second Street, not on Third Street, not clearly going to cause problems for some of our neighbors by helping other of our neighbors. Yeah, see if we can find a better spot.
So I will make a commitment that, after tonight's ruling, that I will do everything I can to assist in finding an appropriate spot that you can go ahead and feed and not be hassled. That's our goal. We want to have a safe city, clean, to promote your beautification of our city, Mayor. And we want to support that, but we also want to support people getting food. So I will commit. And I'll make contact with you. I'm doing site screening tomorrow for Lions, but in the afternoon, I'll contact you.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Ring?
I've been struggling with this, more from the business side of things. And I think I'm satisfied that effectively our type two licensing can continue until 12 months after a type two change takes effect in our land use code. I think that that answers the mail there, so to speak, that we're not going to, we're not going to stop, or, you know, be a roadblock, or, you know, effectively, we're being more, we're continuing to try to be business-friendly. And I look forward to that discussion to come up with that land use definition. And I would, just as Counselor Richardson, you know, wanted us to direct staff after the vote, to address the Bread and Blessings food distribution, I would also want staff to, or advocate for staff to take care of the land use thing as quickly as possible, knowing that it's going to take a long time to get done, if, in fact, we want to go down that road. Because effectively, for the next 10 years, they could keep renewing a license and keep going. As for Bread and Blessings, I firmly believe that it's great work. I think that it's needed. I think we all agree with that. And it's, that's, it's a very difficult decision in front of us tonight, and I like the fact that we've had some robust discussion about it in the public, right? There's nothing behind closed doors. It's very transparent, and I think it's a good back and forth. And, you know, I, too, I'm a business owner downtown, and I'm concerned about it. I, you know, I've spoken with other business owners downtown, and they're concerned about it. And I think that, I think that that'll be effective, whatever happens with this vote. I think it'll be effective afterwards to work with Bread and Blessings. The nice thing is that this, I spoke earlier about being clear and objective, right? And I think that one of the things that's been missing is a clear and objective definition of everybody that does distribute food downtown, whether it's free, or whether somebody's, you know, running a business. I can appreciate the need for clarity on that. I think it helps streamline things. And I think ultimately, and my hope, is that Teresa and the volunteers at Bread and Blessings can continue to operate. I know they will. There's nothing that's going to stop them from operating. Even if this ordinance does go through this evening, Bread and Blessings will continue to do the good work that they have been doing for so, for so many years. And I, I just want to make sure that everybody knows that I appreciate that.
I have one more question. Isn't this the way government should work? Isn't this where we can come to- Isn't this where we can come together and we can discuss and there's no anger, there's no hate, and we can come to a conclusion for the best interest of our community? This is the way government should work.
Any other comments or questions? Ms. Harrow, will you please read the ordinance by title only?
General Ordinance Number 25-1419, repealing the Dallas Municipal Code, Chapter 8.28, transient merchants, and the Dallas Municipal Code, Chapter 8.29, mobile food vendors, and establishing the Dallas Municipal Code, Chapter 8.06, mobile food vendors and transient merchants.
All those in favor of the ordinance, please say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Oh.
Motion carries.
Oh.
Oh.
Thank you very much.
Oh.
We'll take a 10-minute recess. Please come back at 13 minutes after seven. City Counselor Rod Runyon, I must also declare a conflict of interest here. I believe I have an actual conflict of interest because my participation would affect my financial interests since this resolution considers changes to the mayor's compensation, and I'm the mayor. Because I may have an actual conflict of interest, I will be refraining from further participation on this item and will return for the next item on the agenda. And with that, I will now leave the DAS and exit the room. Please come back and get me at the appropriate time.
City Counselor Rod Runyon, I must also declare a conflict of interest here. I believe and I have an actual conflict of interest because of my participation would affect financial interests since this resolution considers changes to Counselor Position Five's compensation, and I hold that office because I may have an actual conflict of interest. I will be refraining from further participation on this item and will return, if I can find my way back, for the next item on the agenda. With the mayor's absence, the city council rules designate me as the presiding officer. Before we proceed, I must declare a conflict of interest here. I believe I have a potential conflict of interest because my participation could affect my financial interests since this resolution, resolution considers changes to the mayor's compensation, and I could run for that office in the future. With that said, I'm comfortable participating in this item after making this disclosure.
Uh, below Counselor Ring, I must also declare a conflict of interest here. I believe that I have a potential conflict of interest because my participation could affect my financial interests. This, since, since this resolution considers changes to the mayor's compensation, and I could run for that office in the future. With that said, I am comfortable participating on this item after making that disclosure.
I must also declare a conflict of interest here. I believe I have a potential conflict of interest because my participation could affect my financial interests since this resolution considers changes to the mayor's compensation, and I could run for that office in the future. With that said, I am comfortable participating on this item and after making that, after making that disclosure.
Very good. May we have the staff report, Mr. Klebs?
Mr. Presiding Officer.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did I miss Dan? Yes.
Do you, if you may, or if I may, rather.
Oh, yes.
Uh, Counselor Richardson here, and like Counselors Ring and Randall, I need to declare a potential conflict of interest because my participation could affect my financial interests since this resolution considers the mayor's compensation, and I suppose I could run for that office in the future. I have no plans for it, but that said, I am comfortable participating on this item after making that disclosure.
Now, it's very good. May we have the staff report, Mr. Klebs?
Uh, thank you, Council President. Resolution 25-032A, amending city's official compensation policy for elected officials. This is a staff report that will be nearly the same for the three items that we have coming up, so I'll be very detailed in this initial, initial presentation and will summarize in the subsequent ones. On May 9th, 2025, the Oregon Government Ethics Commission issued an advisory opinion to find that public officials may receive certain fringe benefits if, if made part of their official compensation package. In effect, this opinion indicates mayors, city councilors, and city-appointed volunteers may receive food, beverages, and certain incidental items if those benefits are part of their official compensation package. The attached proposed resolution amends our policy by expanding its provisions to also apply to appointed volunteers, such as those serving on the Planning Commission, the Budget Committee, et cetera, in addition to city council. As such, it also renames the city's official compensation policy for elected and appointed officials in light of what I just mentioned. It adds a new section related to food and beverage and other related items provided by the city to the mayor and council position number five specifically during city-related events, meetings, and conferences. It adds a new Section 5D for incidental items. These are incidental items of modest or de minimis value, customarily provided by employers to employees, related to, you know, work events, team-building activities, conferences, and whatnot. These are changes to the compensation packages for volunteers, the mayor and council position number five, as I mentioned. This proposed resolution is one of three, and this structured approach, which in the, the process that we're going through this evening, is to ensure consistency with provisions of ORS 244 dot 120 to BA, which requires public officials met with actual conflicts of interest to refrain from participating in any discussion or debate on the issue which the actual conflict arises or voting on that issue. This three-part resolution that we're following is based on Oregon Government Ethics Commission Advice 24 dash 342I concerning this application. There are no budget changes anticipated as a result of the passage of this resolution. There, the budget that we have adopted will not change as a result of this, and staff's recommendation is to adopt Resolution Number 25 dash 032A as presented. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
One, one question, Mr. City Manager. I just want to be clear that this would allow for us to give light refreshments to the people that volunteer sometimes in multiple evenings on the Budget Committee that join us and talk about the budget every year. Is that true?
Yes, on the Budget Committee.
Excellent. I think they deserve their bits of drinks and sweets and anything to keep the committee going.
The light appetizers and water and maybe coffee we provide on our two, three, four-day back-to-back Budget Committee meetings is, is appreciated by the volunteers.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure they were included in that.
Should we take action to adopt this resolution now, or do we continue on?
I would recommend a motion now. If council would like to do something.
I'd like to hear. Counselors, do you have a, a motion?
Mr. Presiding Officer, I would move to adopt Resolution 25 dash 032A.
Well, we have a motion on the floor, but do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a, a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Not hearing any? All in favor, say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
We have unanimous vote. Will the city clerk please let the mayor and Counselor Runyon know that we are ready to move on? Did they leave the, the building?
I'm just, I had to get something to eat.
Did you guys head to the local pub or? We're missing you.
Not until this.
Okay. You're up. We're on Action Item 9B.
Okay, this is Action Item 9B, a Resolution 25-032B.
All right. Mr. Mayor, I must declare a conflict of interest here. I believe I have an actual conflict of interest because my participation would affect my financial-
Hey, Item 9A is a resolution amending the city's official compensation policy for elected and appointed officials. Declare, however, a conflict of interest here. I believe I have an actual conflict of interest because my participation would affect my financial interests. Since this resolution considers changes to the mayor's compensation, and I'm the mayor, because I may have an actual conflict of interest, I will be refraining from further participation on this item and will return for the next item on the agenda. And with that, I will now leave the DAS and exit the room. Please come back and get me at the appropriate time. City Councilor Rod Runyon, I must also declare a conflict of interest here. I believe and I have an actual conflict of interest because of my participation would affect financial interests. Since this resolution considers changes to Councilor Position Five's compensation, and I hold that office, because I may have an actual conflict of interest, I will be refraining from further participation on this item and will return, if I can find my way back, for the next item on the agenda.
With the mayor's absence, the city council rules designate me as the presiding officer. Before we proceed, I must declare a conflict of interest here. I believe I have a potential conflict of interest because my participation could affect my financial interest. Since this resolution considers changes to the mayor's compensation, and I could run for that office in the future. With that said, I'm comfortable participating in this item after making this disclosure.
Low Council Ring, I must also declare a conflict of interest here. I believe that I have a potential conflict of interest because my participation could affect my financial interests. This, since this resolution considers changes to the mayor's compensation, and I could run for that office in the future. With that said, I am comfortable participating on this item after making that disclosure.
I must also declare a conflict of interest here. I believe I have a potential conflict of interest because my participation could affect my financial interests. Since this resolution considers changes to the mayor's compensation, and I could run for that office in the future. With that said, I am comfortable participating on this item and after making that disclosure.
Very good. May we have the staff report, Mr. Klebs?
Mr. Presiding Officer.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did I miss Dan? Yes.
If you may, or if I may, rather.
Oh, yes.
Councilor Richardson here, and like Councilors Ring and Randall, I need to declare a potential conflict of interest because my participation could affect my financial interests. Since this resolution considers the mayor's compensation, and I suppose I could run for that office in the future. I have no plans for it. But that said, I am comfortable participating on this item after making that disclosure.
Now, it's very good. May we have the staff report, Mr. Klebs?
Thank you, Council President. Resolution 25-032A, amending city's official compensation policy for elected officials. This is a staff report that will be nearly the same for the three items that we have coming up. So I'll be very detailed in this initial presentation and will summarize in the subsequent ones. On May 9, 2025, the Oregon Government Ethics Commission issued an advisory opinion to find that public officials may receive certain fringe benefits if, if made part of their official compensation package. In effect, this opinion indicates mayors, city councilors, and city-appointed volunteers may receive food, beverages, and certain incidental items if those benefits are part of their official compensation package. The attached proposed resolution amends our policy by expanding its provisions to also apply to appointed volunteers, such as those serving on the planning commission, the budget committee, et cetera, in addition to city council. As such, it also renames the city's official compensation policy for elected and appointed officials in light of what I just mentioned. It adds a new section related to food and beverage and other related items provided by the city to the mayor and council position number five specifically during city-related events, meetings, and conferences. It adds a new section 5D for incidental items. These are incidental items of modest or de minimis value customarily provided by employers to employees related to, you know, work events, team-building activities, conferences, and whatnot. These are changes to the compensation packages for volunteers, the mayor and council position number five, as I mentioned. This proposed resolution is one of three. And this structured approach, which in the process that we're going through this evening, is to ensure consistency with provisions of ORS 244.120-2BA, which requires public officials met with actual conflicts of interest to refrain from participating in any discussion or debate on the issue which the actual conflict arises or voting on that issue. This three-part resolution that we're following is based on Oregon Government Ethics Commission Advice, 24-342I concerning this application. There are no budget changes anticipated as a result of the passage of this resolution. The budget that we have adopted will not change as a result of this. And staff's recommendation is to adopt Resolution Number 25-032A as presented. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
One question, Mr. City Manager. I just want to be clear that this would allow for us to give light refreshments to the people that volunteer sometimes multiple evenings on the Budget Committee that join us and talk about the budget every year. Is that true?
Yes, on the Budget Committee.
Excellent. I think they deserve their bits of drinks and sweets and anything to keep the committee going.
The light appetizers and water and maybe coffee we provide on our two, three, four-day back-to-back Budget Committee meetings is appreciated by the volunteers.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure they were included in that.
Should we take action to adopt this resolution now, or do we continue on?
I would recommend a motion now. If council would like to do something.
I'd like to hear. Councilors, do you have a motion?
Mr. Presiding Officer, I would move to adopt Resolution 25-032A.
Well, we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Not hearing any. All in favor, say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
We have unanimous vote. Will the city clerk please let the mayor and Councilor Runyon know that we are ready to move on? Did they leave the building?
I'm just going to get something to eat.
Did you guys head to the local pub, or we're missing you?
Not until this.
Okay. You're up.
We're on Action Item 9B.
Okay, this is Action Item 9B, a Resolution 25-032B.
All right. Mr. Mayor, I must declare a conflict of interest here. I believe I have an actual conflict of interest because my participation would affect my financial interest since this resolution considers changes to Councilor Position Number One's compensation, and I hold that office. Because I have an actual conflict of interest, I will be refraining from any further participation on this item and will return for the next item on the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Council Ring.
Mr. Mayor, I must also declare a conflict of interest here. I believe I have an actual conflict of interest because my participation would affect my financial interests since this resolution considers changes to Councilor Position Two's compensation, and I hold that office. Because I may have an actual conflict of interest, I will be refraining from further participation on this item and will return for the next item on the agenda.
Okay. Can we have a staff report, Mr. Klebs?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I gave a staff report on the prior resolution, Number 25-032A, at approximately 7:15 during this meeting and applies exactly to this resolution as well, except this applies to Positions Number One and Two. In the essence of time, I will answer any questions that you may have on the staff report included in your packet.
Any questions for Mr. Klebs? Okay, we have a motion regarding the resolution?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution Number 25-032B as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved by Council Randall and seconded by Council Richardson to adopt the resolution as described. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We can bring in Councilor McLaughlin and Councilor Ring.
Okay.
Your information, we pass the resolution. Now we're at Action Item 9C, a Resolution Number 25-032C. Does anybody have any announcements they'd like to make?
Mr. Mayor, I must declare a conflict of interest here. I believe I have an actual conflict of interest because my participation would affect my financial interests since this resolution considers changes to Councilor Position Number Three's compensation, and I hold that office. Because I may have an actual conflict of interest, I will be refraining from further participation on this item and will return for the next item on the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, after deep reflection, I must also declare a conflict of interest here. I believe I have an actual conflict of interest because my participation would affect my financial interests since this resolution considers changes to Councilor Position Number Four and its compensation, and I hold that office. Because I have an actual conflict of interest, I will be refraining from further participation on this item and I will return for the next item on the agenda.
Okay. Thank you, Council Richardson. May we have a staff report, Mr. Klebs?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Once again, the staff report I gave at approximately 7:15 this evening during this meeting applies exactly the same to this resolution, except this resolution applies to Councilor Position Number Three and Number Four. In the essence of time, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you, anyone may have based on the agenda staff report included in your packet.
Any questions for Mr. Klebs? If not, is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I move to adopt Resolution Number 25-032C as presented.
McLaughlin will second.
It's been moved by Council Ring and seconded by Council McLaughlin to adopt Resolution 25-032C. Is there any discussion or questions? All those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
We have coffee now?
No.
I think the city's going to start supplying. Resolution did pass. And now we are at Item 9D, which is an ordinance accepting a quick claim deed for real property on West First Street. Okay, Mr. Kara.
Thank you very much, Mayor Mays, City Council. There's a diagram depicting this situation on page 38 of 62 in your agenda packet. This is connected with the city's West Side Interceptor Phase Two project, which is headed for construction this autumn. And a particular portion of that project impacts West First Street Public Ride-A-Way. This phase of the project is for the upsizing of the existing sanitary sewer main that passes underneath the railroad spur on West First that's serving Pacific Coast Producers, also known as the Oregon Cherry Growers. A portion of that project involves the proposed demolition of the existing and decommissioned private spur crossing that crosses right over the public ride-of-way on West First Street in that diagram. City's Public Works Department and my office have coordinated with our title experts, directly with Union Pacific Railroad Company, and quite a bit of good back-and-forth actually with Oregon Cherry Growers LLC, the adjacent property owner, on the crossings' removal during the scope of work for this particular project. UP said they have no interest whatsoever in this private spur. And the only other entity who might would be the adjacent property owner. And so I actually have in my office as we speak a fully signed version and fully signed and notarized version of this quick claim deed from Oregon Cherry Growers. They fully support this project and the improvements that the city's going to be constructing along West First Street. They have, as I mentioned, signed the deed already and desire to convey all interest they may have in the crossing to the city or the city's removal of the crossing as part of the project. And the legal mechanism for accomplishing that is a quick claim deed. And it's a different kind of deed usually than I think what most people hear when they think of the word deed. A quick claim deed basically is used when somebody like the Oregon Cherry Growers, they say, look, we don't know if we own it, but if we own it, it's yours. And so that's exactly what this is. So any interest they may have, they are giving to the city. But just like any other deed, accepting title to real property has to be accepted on behalf of the city before it can come into our ownership. And so my recommendation here tonight is for council to adopt this special ordinance, which is the legal tool that we would use to accept ownership of real property. The budget implications are indicated right here on page 39 of your staff report. We also have the projects engineer and public works director in the audience if anybody has any particular questions connected to this project or this crossing.
Thank you, Mr. Kara. Is there any questions for Mr. Kara? Any discussion? Would anybody like to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, move to adopt Special Ordinance Number 25-610, a special ordinance accepting a quick claim to real property located on West First Street by title only as presented.
McLaughlin will second.
It's been moved by Council Ring and seconded by Council McLaughlin to pass the ordinance accepting a quick claim deed to real property located on West First Street. Is there any more discussion or questions? Does anybody object to the, to Ms. Hera reading the ordinance by title only and not read the entire ordinance in its entirety?
Agreed.
Ms. Hera, would you please read the ordinance by title only?
Special Ordinance 25-610, accepting a quick claim to real property located on West First Street.
All those in favor of the ordinance, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Is there any more business to come before the city council?
Thank you.
Yes.
The mayor and I mentioned that we attended the Lake of Oregon Cities meeting on local revenue tools and so forth. You can go to the LOC website. You might want to skim through it. It's going to be coming to us hot and heavy. Lots of information and whatnot, and get a heads up on it with this little packet. It's online. Thank you.
Any other business to come before the council?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. I would like to direct staff, I'd like, I guess, a nod of the head or affirmation for my fellow councilors to direct staff, Mr. Klebs, to communicate with Bread and Blessings and any other relevant partners, including perhaps CFL and McCAC or IMSAC in a robust, good-faith effort to help find an appropriate distribution site for that effort. It's not the city's job, but I think it behooves us. I think it would be wise to be an engaged partner in that. And we could probably convene and help give that exploration the best chance of happening in the near future with the specifications that such a site not be downtown and not be in a residential neighborhood.
Any objection or any other comments on Mr. Council?
Are you asking for a committee or something?
No, I'm just asking to direct staff. Say please help them see if we can find them a spot that works better.
I just, I go back and forth on this. This is not the city's job.
Yep.
Well, if we have members of the council, the city manager, that want to volunteer on something, I think that's entirely up to them. But I don't think it's something we should officially do as a city council. But volunteerism is alive and wellness community. And I've been involved in that kind of work more years than I can think of. I think community action needs to step up. They say they don't have the resources. They don't have this or that. They went from nine employees to 31, according to the minutes. And then I heard today it might be 35. So I'm thinking that's a really good spot right out there. Pallet shelters are already there. Water's there. Electricity's there. There's some activity that needs to happen right there. But Tim has already done some volunteering in this meeting already.
Yeah. So would you object to having staff lend a hand to some number of, a meeting or two to help answer any questions or help?
I think we have a very capable city manager who has a lot of things on his plate. And as his time is available, he'll make his own decisions regarding other things that go on in the community.
Well, I think at some point, it's going to come back to the city as far as.
I'm just not going to, I'm not going to vote to direct staff to do. That's up to them. A lot of things are done by the city manager and staff that we don't even know anything about. This might be one of them.
I tell you guys everything. I don't know what you're talking about.
Well, I was not looking for a vote. I take your point. I was not looking for a vote. I was looking for acquiescence, I guess, pushback in support of that idea, so that we are not just saying words to those folks that we support them, but back it up with some amount of assistance, at least thinking about and trying to make it happen.
You know, if the council is, excuse me. Council Runyon and I have talked about this, and I agree with what he said about Mid-Columbia Community Action. But if, if we expect Mid-Columbia Community Action to do certain things, we should communicate that to them.
We had that conversation with the city manager.
Okay, so.
If it's helpful.
I think it'd be, I think it's fair to, for the city manager to explain to Mid-Columbia Community Action. And again, I've been involved with this for six and a half years. If you need my help or Council McLaughlin's, you know, we'll certainly do what we can to help. But I think it may be incumbent upon the city manager to have a discussion with Mid-Columbia, Mid-Columbia Community Action and let them know the feelings of the, at least the majority of the city council.
The discussion helpful. I think that census from city council can be helpful. I think the individual, you know, perspectives or opinions of the councilors are helpful as well in different ways and whatnot. What I can say to date is that I have had meetings with One Community Health and Mid-Columbia Community Action Council. McCAC and I have exchanged a couple of different emails, exploring different potential sites. We are a community at the end of the day. And while it may not be our responsibility to find locations for nonprofits or for-profits, for that matter, to execute their services, you know, we've done some of that outreach already to find and see where there's a nexus point or some different ways that we could help in the best interests of the community overall. I will say that specifically, we haven't, you know, ruled out any particular areas for some of these different locations. And so that kind of direction, if that is, again, individually or on a consensus basis, that's your prerogative, would be helpful in some of my outreach there in finding a location that best meets everyone's needs.
The other three of you have heard two opinions. Do you have any among you to add?
Getting to your suggestion, I definitely support continued outreach. As like you say, as we've been doing for years now.
Well, does anybody have an objection if the city manager was to communicate to Mid-Columbia Community Action that the council would like to know what the future plans are for the pallet shelters specifically and why Bread and Blessings cannot utilize that particular area for their activities and for their services? And furthermore, maybe get a better idea as to what 35 employees are doing, you know? Is that?
No, I'm happy to.
Is that okay with this?
And I do it in my own accord too, frankly.
I'm in agreement with that. Yep.
Council Ring?
I'm generally okay with that, and I'll add something. One of the things that I, that stuck in my mind from the new executive director, her goal this year is to sustain her current level of services. And my question was, you know, what was going to stop her from achieving that goal? And definitely, you know, funding is in question to some degree. But the thing that kind of hit the nail on the head, as she said very specifically, is that the city can advocate. And I think there's a very, there's a distinct difference between advocating for something and taking immediate action and doing something. I think that it's, I think that we're all talking about basically the same thing. We all want to see good things happen to this, to that organization. And we want to see Bread and Blessings continue to do what they're doing. I think what we're saying is a coordinated fashion that advocates for those services in our city is what we're really coming down to. Is that a good takeaway? I don't know.
All I'm saying is I don't want to put a direction, directive on staff. City manager will figure out his own path. He's already doing some of that already. I've had an individual discussion, maybe some of you have as well. And just a reminder, we bought those pallet shelters.
Or should know.
About 400 grand into the whole facility for all their stuff. So I think they have some obligation. That'd be a great spot as a, one of our traffic safety commissioners told me today, it'd be a one-stop shop out there. They've got all the counseling. They've got people to help people, which is their mission, and they have the shelters right on there. And they've got over 30 employees from the nine that they had, so.
They may, I'm not defending them, but I'm just saying they may have an explanation as to what their 35 employees are doing. They may have a good explanation for why they can't put Bread and Blessings at the pallet shelters. But we won't know that until our concerns are communicated to them.
Exactly.
Okay. So do you feel you have some direction?
I think I will continue down the direction I was headed.
Okay. Any other business to come before the council? With that, this meeting is adjourned.